The Columbus City Council meeting for October 20th, 2025 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, a copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, welcome back.
Thanks.
And would you please call roll?
Bookley?
Here.
Allercone?
Here.
Barr?
Here.
Hemer?
Here.
Jablonsky?
Here.
Lopez?
Here.
Polinski?
Here.
Roth?
Here.
Schilling?
Here.
Mayor Bookley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mr. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. Mayor Condeck, show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other, as well as to all of our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hail At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and red duster spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the horn of the breeze
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. And especially, again, I welcome back our city clerk. It's good to have you with us. If at any time during our meeting this evening, anyone in our audience would like to address any council item or any agenda item on the council agenda, we'd ask you please to come forward, give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. All right, with that, we'll start with the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of October 6th, 2025, Board of Equalization meeting. Item four B, minutes of October 6th, 2025, City Council meeting. Item four C, minutes of October 14th, 2025, Civil Service Commission meeting, certifying police chief candidates David Levitt and Brett Strecker. Item four D, application from Harrah's Nebraska LLC doing business as Harrah's Columbus, Nebraska Racing and Casino for Aaron King as the manager in conjunction with their liquor license. Item four E, resolution number R25-131 authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item four F, Finance Department report. And item four G, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council members, is there anything you would like removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to report of city offices.
Item nine A, update on the Nebraska Department of Transportation, 23rd Street Reconstruction Project. City Engineer Rick Bogus.
Well, after three years, this potentially could be my last report on this project because they're getting really close to be done, which is a good thing, as everybody probably knows. It's playing out like we thought. There's, the road's open, but of course, as we discussed last few meetings, there's lane closures. There's things that they have to just get done. They couldn't get done during the phasing, so that's what they're doing right now. Some signalization stuff, basically, is what it is. There's some trees that need to get done. Yeah, there's just things of that nature, just to finish, finish up. One thing that there will be a lane closure on that is not related to this project, is the EPA is coming back into town. They're going to be doing some work over by the 26th Avenue, 20, 25th Avenue area that they, lot that they own. So that's actually, I think, started today. There might be a lane closure on the highway coming up here pretty soon. They're kind of working that with the DOT, so it will be a partial lane closure, just one lane eastbound, but not technically related to the project, but nobody probably really realized that. States will be working soon with, with Public Works and putting up the icy road, no salt signs, things of that nature. So there's still things that are going to happen over the next month or maybe even longer, but it's really getting to the point that they're getting about done.
Great. Thank you.
Will the traffic light come in?
The traffic light came in early and they actually put it in today, so, so appreciate the work of interim chief Strecker, getting his people there to help out with closing the highway for a short period of time while they swung that open. So that actually got in today. Was supposed to be next Monday.
Any other questions on 23rd Street? All right, we'll let you do the next one.
Item nine B is the DOT's Loop River Bridge project update.
Well, not as exciting, but just as important. They're moving forward on that. They're working on the, the piers, the piers that are in the river, basically, because they don't, not have that limitation this time of year. So that was the plan, is to, is to work on them. You could probably see or hear them once in a while, what they're all doing with the piling and so forth. So they're doing that. They, just everybody realizes and knows, they, they have what's called an emergency action plan. So with that temporary bridge, basically, that's in there, or the bridge itself that they're working on, they have a plan should ice form or trees or debris form on their bridge, they can remove them, and that's what they will do. I mean, they, they have a vested interest in doing that, so they'll do everything that they can that's safe. And so that's part of the plan that they've always had and act, appointed. It was approved by the Corps of Engineers and everybody in the DOT, and we have a copy of it. Otherwise, they're on schedule.
Any questions for Rick around, about the Loop River Bridge? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to...
New business.
New business.
Item 13A, appointment of Fred Lynn Wiener to the Columbus Housing Authority Board for a five-year term.
Council members, the mayor asks with your permission to submit the following name to you for appointment of, at the October 2025 City Council meeting per City Council rules for Columbus Housing Authority five-year term. Fredalina Weiner has served our community in various, various capacities for more than 50 years. She retired as a paralegal at Ferenger Milak LLP after 45 years of employment. Fred has volunteered at the Columbus Community Hospital by providing insight and support for various hospital marketing projects, fundraisers, and blood drives, and as a volunteer and guest service assistant. For the past 20 years, she has volunteered for the Platte County Election Commissioner, with this year serving on the commission's canvas board. Fred was a downtown runaround volunteer for 20 years and cares deeply about Columbus and the continued growth and prosperity of the community. Council members entertain a motion for this appointment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B, application from Advanced Consulting Engineering Services Incorporated for preliminary plat of Hidden Meadows addition. This is the southeast corner of 3rd Avenue and 38th Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move the preliminary plat of Hidden Meadows addition be approved?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat of Hidden Meadows addition. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, Motion passes.
Item 13C, application from Cottonwood Heights LLC for preliminary plat of Heartland Crossing addition, previously known as Cottonwood Heights addition, on the southwest corner of 38th Street and East 6th Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of preliminary plat of Heartland Crossing addition...
Second.
...to be approved.
We, we have a motion in a quick second to approve the application from Cottonwood Heights for the preliminary plat. Any discussion? Seeing none. My only comment, did you change the name to confuse us, or is that just something that happened?
We changed the name to work with the V O N S protection.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. Those Motion passes.
Item 13D, quote from Master Tech Truck and Equipment in the amount of $283,250 for trade-in, after trade-in credit for a dump truck with brine system and snow plow for the street department. This is CIP number 26-25.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Master Tech Truck and Equipment for a dump truck with a brine system and a snow plow be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a sec, second to accept the quote for the brine truck with the, with the trade-in. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Item 13E, quote from Armor Equipment in the amount of $330,000 after trade-in credit for CCTV inspection unit for the water collection division. This is CIP number 26-27.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Armor Equipment for CCTV inspection unit be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the quote from Armor Equipment for the CCTV inspection unit. Any discussion? Seeing none. I would just add, and Chuck, you might, I, I had asked you earlier, and I think it's, it's probably important the public recognize, there were trade-ins on this and the previous purchase, and they were substantial trade-ins, and you were comfortable that those were reasonable amounts to receive for our older equipment?
Yeah, we feel we've got some good trade-in prices on them, knowing the conditions of the vehicles and the years. The condition of the equipment, especially this camera van being in the wastewater side of it, the components, and those items, they just don't last. And so, yeah, we feel these are fair trades.
Very good.
And you mentioned this was the truck that goes out and collects the data on the water usage, is that?
No, this is, this would be the truck that they put the camera down in the sewer manhole, and it cameras the sewer lines and looks for issues and problems.
All right. That is correct. Misunderstood you, sorry.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Item 13F, quote from Bauer Built Tire in the amount of $28,601.40 for a push loader tire replacement for the transfer station. This is CIP 21-33.
I move that the quote of Bauer Built Tire...
Tire, for the push loader be, be accepted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Bauer Built Tire for the push loader tire replacement. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes, sir.
How long do these tires last? Is this the first time we've changed them on that loader?
Yes, this is the first time they've been replaced on this new loader, and I think they're approximately eight years old.
Okay.
And we ran them way past their wear line, so. But it's just solid rubber tire that includes the rims, the way they're built, so they get some trade-in on those bit.
Very good. And there was quite a difference between the Bauer quote and then the other quote, so that was...
Yeah.
Quite a spread between them.
Yeah, you gotta do your due diligence.
Very good. All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Item 13G, quote from Ty's Outdoor Power and Service in the amount of $33,000 after trade-in credit for VenTrak's 4x4 mower for the street department. This is CIP 26-23.
Move that the quote from Ty's Outdoor Power and Service for VenTrak 4x4 mower be accepted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Ty's Outdoor Power and Service for the VenTrak 4x4 mower. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Item 13H, quote from Titan Machinery in the amount of $17,000 for a loader bucket with a grapple for the transfer station. This is CIP 24-39.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Titan Machinery for loader bucket with grapple be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Titan Machinery for the loader bucket with a grapple. Any discussion? Question, did we not have one? Is this a replacement or an addition?
This is a replacement of the current unit we have, which was very light duty and has been repaired several times. We want to have a safe operation down there, so we're getting a heavy-duty one.
Awesome. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? If not, all those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Item 13I, quote from Sid Dillon Fleet and Commercial in the amount of $44,621 for a pickup for the wastewater treatment facility. This is CIP 25-53.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Sid Dillon Fleet and Commercial for a pickup be accepted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Sid Dillon Fleet and Commercial for a pickup for the water wa, wastewater treatment facility. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Item 13J, quote from Passler in the amount of $16,444.40 for a three-year renewal and upgrade of the network monitoring software.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Passler for the three-year renewal and upgrade of network monitor software be accepted. Second?
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Passler for the three-year renewal and upgrade of network monitoring software. Any discussion? Seeing none.
Is this a budgeted item?
Yeah, we have a IT line item in the CIP that will come out of that.
Okay. All right.
See a CIP, CIP number?
Good question. All right. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Item 13K, quote from Sirius Computer Solutions LLC in the amount of $11,771.71 for renewal of the Sentinel One workstation and server protection platform subscription. This is, will come out of that same CIP we have for IT services. I do not have the number memorized.
Okay.
Move the quote from Sirius Computer Solutions LLC for renewal of server protector platform subscription be accepted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Sirius Computer Solutions for the renewal of the server protection platform subscription. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Item 13L, quotes from Ziegler Oil Company in the amount of $11,499 for infrared tube heaters and Sat Brothers Petroleum Incorporated in the amount of $7,225.41 for propane tank for the snow removal equipment building at the airport. This is CIP 26-14.
Move that the quotes from Ziegler Oil Company and Sat Brothers Petroleum for infrared tube heaters and propane tank be accepted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Ziegler Oil Company for infrared tube heaters and Sat Brother Petroleum for propane tank for the snow removal equipment building at the airport. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Item 13M, quote from Miracle Play Systems in the amount of $13,948.66 for playground equipment replacement in various city parks. This is CIP 24-14.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Miracle Play Systems for playground equipment replacement be accepted? Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Miracle Play Systems for various city parks, playgrounds. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13N Quote from Coachera Painting Incorporated in the Amount of $28,833 for a painting of the Pawnee Plunge Lap Pool. This is CIP 25-11.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Coachera Painting Incorporated for painting of the Pawnee Park Lap Pool be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Coachera Painting for the Pawnee Plunge Lap Pool. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13O Purchase from Utility Service Company Incorporated in the Amount of $35,930 for a water tower mixer for the water utility department. This is CIP 26-31.
Mr. Mayor, I move the purchase from Utility Service Co. Inc. for a water tower mixer be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the, to accept the quote from Utility Service Inc. for a water tower mixer for the water utility department. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13P Comments from the mayor and city council members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Any council members with comments this evening? All right, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. I wanted to let the, the council know and, and the public, if you haven't seen them, we are to, supposed to have our patrol car with the new decals on it downstairs. So when you leave this evening, you could see the newly decal'd police car. I believe it's the only one that's been completed as of today. Others are in, you know, in the works that will get completed, so take a moment and take a look. I've had a chance to see it, it's, it's pretty neat, pretty neat, so I'm glad that's going on. Second thing I wanted to mention, that in the consent agenda, we made the, we made the, the most, we showed that Civil Service had approved the, the moving forward and certified two candidates for our vacant police chief job. I also wanted to make sure the public understood, there's a third candidate that's also qualified. He was certified at our last testing. So we have three candidates that will be available to make the choice as we get ready to do that here in the very near future. And finally, something I meant to say last council meeting and neglected, if you have not had a chance, please take a look at the donor board in the library. The donor board is complete. I think it's quite amazing when you think that our library foundation put together $8 million to make the library possible, help make the library possible, and it, it, you know, took a lot of work and effort to do that. It was a major contributor to the library with, that is housed within this building, and about three weeks ago, this donor board was unveiled, which identifies those individuals and groups and corporations that have donated to make that happen, and that will possibly continue to donate to the library foundation in the future to make it the quite, the great place that it, that it is. So, again, if you haven't had a chance, take a look. It's a pretty neat donor board that highlights some great things that people in Columbus have done. All right, we'll move on to resolutions this evening.
Item 14A Resolution Number R25-132 Amending the Schedule of Fees for Economic Development by Adding the Micro-TIF Micro Tax Increment Financing Program Application Fee.
Mr. Mayor.
I move that Resolution Number R25-132 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-132. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14B Resolution Number R25-133 Amending the Standard Operating Procedures and Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy for Columbus Area Transit.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R25-133 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-133. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14C Resolution Number R25-134 Awarding Community Development Block Grant Funds in the Amount of $13,470 to Yonzie Izagira for Downtown Revitalization located at 2319 13th Street.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R25-134 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-134. Any discussion?
That's a matching fund rate, so $26 is a whole project.
$26,000, yes.
Good, good.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14D Resolution Number R25-135 Approving Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Lincoln, Nebraska Establishing the Columbus Fire Department as a Participating Agency for the FEMA Nebraska Task Force One.
Mr. Mayor, I move Resolution Number R25-135 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-135. Any discussion?
Just, can you explain what benefit this will be for Columbus, or is it just a...
Sure. The biggest benefit's going to be the fact that the training that comes along with this team is second to none. So however many personnel over the years that are taken up as team members are going to be able to bring that training back to our department, a majority of it revolves around urban search and rescue, technical rescue, and those types of things, hazardous materials. So having people attached to this team are, is going to bring that back. Secondly, I think just building the establishment of these relationships, this is something from my understanding that quite a number of our people have wanted to be a part of for a very long time, so for this finally to, to be an opportunity for us to kind of extend our reach and be members participating agency with this team is, is going to have a huge effect. It is a national and international emergency response team, as well as local and state. Lincoln is the agency head or the FEMA head, they run that team, so anything we do goes through the City of Lincoln. One very important aspect of this is the fact that it costs us nothing. It is all reimbursed by Lincoln, the City of Lincoln, and then Lincoln will go off and handle the reimbursement through FEMA. So it is a one-for-one cost, no additional funds required. They outfit them, supply them, train them, the whole nine yards, so.
Outside of training, can you give us an example how this, how it would work? I mean, if, like, say, we had a flood...
Sure.
People could come in and participate in that capacity, or you could go somewhere to...
That's, that's right. So the FEMA team is deployable internationally, and how they do this is every month, they roster a group of individuals, and there's different types of teams depending upon what they need. If they have a, if we recall, a few years ago in Miami, they had a structural collapse, so multiple FEMA teams came in to perform that rescue. 9/11, you know, those types of incidents, Haiti, earthquakes, floods, stuff like that. Locally, it's just a matter of asking for those resources. So it may not be the entire team. The recent building explosion in Fremont, the FEMA team was activated, they brought in, they didn't bring an entire team, but they brought in resources to help mitigate that incident. So those are available to us whether or not we are a participating agency in this program. Us being a participating agency just allows for our personnel to be a part of that team. Does that make sense?
Yeah, perfect, thanks.
I, I know when, when the chief brought this up and I, I reviewed, the first thing that came to my mind was, you know, when, when I've heard of the Task Force One getting deployed somewhere, it always made you feel good that that's Nebraska, going to Texas to help out, going to North Carolina to help out, and to be able to say that we're part of that and have that same pride, I think, you know, which would reflect back to our employees, you know, to our firefighters. I think that's number one that I thought of. But immediately after that, I asked you about costs, and you reiterated and, and said that there's absolutely not a dime that comes out of the city of Columbus's pocket. And I mean, if that's the case, and we can get this kind of camaraderie with the people on this kind of a task force, I mean, it's amazing, it's really neat. So I think, I think it's wonderful, I think it's wonderful. Any other comments or questions?
No, I would just add that I think it speaks to the leadership at the fire department that we're at, being asked to be included too, so, good work.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14E Resolution Number R25-136 Awarding the Bid to Retchens Construction Incorporated in the Amount of $1,824,736 for the Columbus North Well, Number 20. This is CIP 25-67.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of Resolution Number R25-136.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number R25-136. Any discussion? This is all part of our 60 million dollar water expansion upgrade that we are just getting kicked off and moving forward with, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
That's all I wanted to know. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14F Resolution Number R25-137 Approving Amendment Number One to the Agreement Between the Owner and Professional and Professional with HDR Engineering Incorporated in an Amount Not to Exceed $186,100 for Additional Design and Construction Phase Services for the Columbus North Well, Number 20, CIP 25-67.
Mr. Mayor, move Resolution Number R25-137 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R25-137. Any discussion?
Just, so, this is money that we're allowing them, if they need additional design work, is that correct? Because the million, something has design work in it?
Just a small portion of this is additional design. That additional stuff was like conduit, security, and I think we looked at some generator stuff, so just a portion of that is additional design. Most of it's the construction phase services coming up for construction of the well, the completion of it, and getting Department Health approval and all that.
I'm thinking it'll oversee it too.
Yeah, yeah, they oversee it, yes.
Just a question.
All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.